Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for candidates for Mill Creek City Council Positions 1, 4, and 6. I am your moderator Lynn Carpenter, past president of the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County. All of the candidates for Mill Creek City Council were invited to attend this forum. Candidates participating in this forum are Eric Cook and Brian Holtzclaw for Position 4, and Melissa Duque for Position 6. Adam Morgan and John Steckler are not participating in this forum. Candidates for Positions 2 and 3 are participating in a separate candidate forum. The League wants to thank all candidates for running for office, for their willingness to serve the community if elected, and for participating in this forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or parties. We do take positions on issues that we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. The ground rules for this forum were sent ahead of time to all candidates. Let me briefly explain the question and answer period rules. Opening and closing questions have been shared with the candidates. Other questions have not been shared, however, we have made each candidate aware of the issue areas this forum will likely cover. And we thank all the community members who sent us recommendations about local issues. I will pose the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond, and then 90 seconds will be allowed for answers to the final questions. I will state this change clearly. We are using a countdown timer visible to all candidates. It shows elapsed time and alerts candidates when there are 15 seconds left and when time is up. Time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. When you see the timer turn red and hear the chime, you are done. I will change the starting order for each question, rotating through all the candidates, so that you get a fair sequence. The first question goes to Mr. Cook. Excuse me. Mr. Cook, what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
I currently do not have any experience in a political field. I'm currently employed with the Washington State Department of Revenue. I very much like Mill Creek. I volunteered coaching my kids in Mill Creek Little League, Silver Lake Soccer Association, Mill Creek Parks and Rec. And that's mostly what I have to offer. I'm eager to learn, willing to participate. I really like, I want to be part of the future of Mill Creek. I've moved here. I like the small town charm. And it's really drawn me, and I want to keep it like that as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holtzclaw, same question.
Thank you, Vicki and Lynn, and thank you for the League for hosting this. I've been on the council now in my eighth year, at the end of my second term. So I've got quite a bit of experience going through three budget cycles now with the city. I've served as the mayor pro tem for five years. And for just over a year now, I've been serving as the mayor. So I have quite a bit of experience now after eight years on the council. I've also represented in Snohomish County tomorrow, which is the county's growth planning body. I have a background in land use and real estate law, so I have a perspective that I think I can bring to the county or the city as we address and tackle some of these growth issues that we have been facing and will continue to face in the years to come. I think the other thing is through my eight years on the council, I've developed quite a few connections and relationships with others in the community, other elected officials at both the county and the state level, our county council members, other mayors that I think helped serve us well, served me well in doing my job for the citizens of Mill Creek.
Thank you. And Ms. Duque, same question. What are your experience and qualifications?
Thank you. I have been a Mill Creek resident for the past nine years, and my husband and I are proud to be raising our two young boys here in Mill Creek. Additionally, I'm an active volunteer with the city of Mill Creek and the current chair of the Parks Board. I have been part of the development of new parks, updates to playgrounds, and have also been able to enjoy the wonderful recreational programs and events our city has produced in partnership with the community. This experience, I feel, has given me a really strong understanding of how city departments and staff work, the relationship between the council and then the overall culture of our city hall. Professionally, I am a project manager with a background in communications and strategy. I've devoted my career to working with nonprofits and foundations, managing projects that help communities thrive. I build campaigns to drive change, develop and maintain budgets, and guide organizations on how to best tell their story. I've also volunteered at various local nonprofits, and I'm the president of my HOA here in Mill Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, and we'll start with Mr. Holtzclaw. What are the biggest challenges facing Mill Creek, and what are its greatest strengths?
Well, that's a lot of questions for a minute. The two challenges, I think one is a challenge and one is an opportunity. The challenge is making sure we have a long-term fiscally sustainable budget. We've adopted three balanced budgets in a row, but looking forward with the lack of development that will be seen in the city now that we're built out, we have challenges of making sure we can keep a revenue stream that keeps up with our costs of providing public services, the police, the fire, and our employees, which increase at a steady rate and a higher rate than our revenues. The opportunity to potentially help address some of that is the DRCC property, which we hope we can come up with a plan to make that a community asset that can help derive people to our community to frequent our businesses. And I think the thing we have that's going for us right now is a strong city staff to help us guide us through those decision-making processes in the months to come on both the budget and putting together a plan for the DRCC.
Thank you. And Ms. Duque, your biggest challenges and greatest strengths of Mill Creek?
Absolutely. I think how the council handles prioritizing infrastructure and growth is probably the biggest challenge and how we look forward to how this city is adapting and growing. And as, you know, Mill Creek is not just the, I believe, not just the physical boundaries that we are, but it's also the unincorporated parts of the community or neighboring cities because we're all slowing. There's no gate outside of our city. So I think prioritizing that infrastructure is incredibly important. I think another challenge that I'm hearing from residents and also I've spoken about is our frustration with the environment in City Hall when it comes to our employees. We've lost a lot of really talented people, and I think that's something that we need to focus on. And greatest strengths are parks, are green spaces, huge pride in our city. You know, people love and choose to live in Mill Creek, and that's evident when people talk about the city of Mill Creek.
Thank you. And Mr. Cook, same question.
The biggest challenge, I think, or challenges would be the revenue, creating new revenue. Because like Mill Creek is built out, so we need to sustain what we currently have. And when prices are, everything's rising, so we need to meet that challenge. We also need to, the infrastructure is definitely an issue as well. We need to maintain our roads. They're only aging, getting older and older, more traffic's flowing through them. And then the really the best, the most positive thing about Mill Creek, I'd say would be the community. People around here are great. People are very invested in Mill Creek. They like Mill Creek. They're moving to Mill Creek because it's a desirable destination to raise a family, to put your kids through schools. And then one other final thing about a challenge, going back to that, would be the schooling. The school, we have so many kids that there's just not that much space anymore for the kids. We potentially might need a new school.
Thank you. And the next question goes first to Ms. Duque. What are the issues, if any, in Mill Creek arising from the pandemic, and how would you address them?
Oh, the pandemic. Our community and businesses have been hit hard due to the economic impact of COVID-19, and I think we need to take steps to promote the existing businesses in our community to help their success. I think there's, in terms of, because of my background in communications and campaign building, there's an opportunity for shop local campaigns, buy local campaigns that the city council and city staff can be supporting and growing. I also think, because of my parks background, that's something that's not always discussed when it comes to business, is actually our recreational programs and the importance of having our families have access to affordable programs within the city of Mill Creek, so they don't have to go to other cities, so they can have dinner at the local pizza shop instead of having to go somewhere else. And all that relates to being able to support our local businesses and making sure that we're helping each other and we're here together.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, what are the issues arising from the pandemic, and how would you address them?
Obviously, one of the biggest things is being shut down. It really impacted businesses, obviously. I currently work for Department of Revenue. I see the tax revenue issues arising from that. People aren't patronizing these businesses, so therefore, sales tax suffers. The businesses suffer. The businesses go out of business, and then there's nothing, and then they don't come back. So everyone loses at that point in time. Obviously, a solution would be obviously not to have the pandemic, right? But once everything is, once everything's back, I guess, whenever that may be, to be welcoming businesses, trying to help them out, see, talk to them, see what they need. What do they need to be successful? I mean, we can try to help them out as best we can within reason. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hartzclaw.
Holtzclaw.
Sorry.
No worries.
Mr. Hartzclaw, your answer to that question?
Yeah, I think there's really two hits and one opportunity. One is, and Melissa alluded to this, I think the pandemic has made some of these cultural issues or culture issues at City Hall even more of a challenge because as most of us have experienced, you know, we don't have the face-to-face interaction with people we work with. And I think that has made it a challenge, you know, this all hit as we were within, after the first year of having a new city manager, and I think it's made it difficult to assimilate with some of the staff. And we've also had a big hit on our revenues. We had to shut down our passport business for the better part of a year. We're now to look at ways to expand that and get that up and going, and also our recreation program. So it's been a big hit on our revenues. The positive side of that is thanks to the federal government, we've got a lot of funds coming to us through the ARPA, the recovery program. We have about $5.8 million coming to us that we're starting to formulate a plan for how to implement that for the benefit of the city.
Thank you. Okay, next question goes first to Mr. Cook. What measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Mill Creek?
Housing options? That's a tough one. Gosh, I mean, I guess at this point in time, I'd have to like research and find certain programs that would help first-time homebuyers. I mean, I know there's first-time homebuyers, but I would research more to have besides that to see if there's any sort of financial aid that first-time homebuyers could apply for and potentially get to help them out to buy their first home, whether it might be a federal government loan or some sort of low APR percentage loan where, you know, it gets them in the door, but it's not gonna, it's not like an 80/20 loan. It's not one of the trick loans. It's a straightforward loan to get these young people into a house to raise their family.
Thank you. And Mr. Holtzclaw, your answer to that question?
You know, the problem comes down to supply. We have an affordability issue because we don't have enough supply. And when you don't have enough supply, it drives prices up at the top and limits the housing choices for people at the lower ends of the economic spectrum. You know, I think one way we have an opportunity to deal with that is through the Mill Creek Boulevard sub area, the area south of Town Center down to 164th. We have the Green Line on 527 running north-south. The Orange Line is coming to provide access to light rail at I-5. We have an opportunity to look at how in the future we may want that to be redeveloped and when it does redevelop. And I think part of our discussion as a community has to be how we can accommodate some additional housing in there where it would have a minimal or less impact on our single-family neighborhoods and could be tied to the transit-oriented development right there with the existing transit line. So I think that's one way we can do it is to facilitate some additional supply of housing in our city.
Thank you. And Ms. Duque, your answer to that question?
Do you mind repeating it one more time?
Beg pardon?
Would you mind repeating the question one more time?
Oh, certainly. What measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Mill Creek?
Yes, you know, it is, I, you know, Mr. Holtzclaw absolutely is on point, of course, with his background when it comes to supply. I think what happens in Mill Creek is there's a lot of negativity around any type of growth or development or any type of conversation about apartments, really anything. And I think the frustration comes from is that whenever any type of development, construction happens, there's no change to the infrastructure and to the roads, the development or the areas are widening until it's a little bit too late when you look at these areas. And so I think for me, in terms of affordability, it is a supply issue. It is, this is Mill Creek, the way it was set up with HOAs and the country club. I mean, there's certain restrictions that way about kind of the view of the city. But if we can really address how we have traffic flow when it comes to transportation, but also roads themselves, I think we can get more buy-in by people understanding the supply issue.
Thank you. Okay, we're switching now to, starting with Mr. Cook. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas or life experiences are different from yours?
Well, first of all, I would like to just go in and meet the people, introduce myself, and get to know every person, you know, ask them about what they're, you know, just get to know them. Their families, are they married? Like, who are they? Just to have, you know, just a baseline. And then from there, we can build on that relationship to see, they can explain how they feel. Ultimately, what I'm trying to say is I'm going in all ears. I'm listening, not making judgments. I want to hear what they have to say. And then obviously, I'll tell them what I have about myself as well. I'd like to make the, just have a good relationship, just normal, no hostility, no judging. We're all there for a reason, for a plan to make Mill Creek better.
Thank you. And Ms. Duque? Your strategy?
Thank you. I made sure to write down the note this time. You know, it's very difficult right now. I think in a way that, I think there's a lack of politeness in terms of how we work with each other. I absolutely agree with Mr. Cook in terms of listening. I mean, it's about asking questions about issues and not taking it personal, about finding commonality and, you know, that lived experience, and of course, you know, sharing my background. But it's not listening for me then to have a response, which is what you see so much. It's about listening and being able to sit in that awkward space where I'm quiet to really understand what the person is sharing, not immediately going, oh, I can make that connection, but instead just accepting that I don't have that lived-in experience or, you know, vice versa. So it's a level of respect, politeness, listening, and being able to be uncomfortable, I think is really important when working with people who have diverse backgrounds or...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holtzclaw, your answer to that question?
Yeah, I think the diversity of the council is one of our strengths right now. I mean, so for instance, we all bring something different to the table. And, you know, I rely on Councilmember Bond and Councilmember Cavalieri when it comes to public safety issue because they have a lot of experience in that area, just like they look to me and listen to me on development issues. I think my main concern moving forward is the communication with the community. When I became mayor, I started doing coffee talks, which we've been doing virtually, to try to reengage with the community. So, you know, that has been one of the things that over eight years has surprised me is how disengaged, with certain exceptions. We have a small group of people who are active, but for the most part, the citizens are disengaged. And so, you know, it's hard for us to make decisions of what the community wants when we don't hear from the community. So I would like to continue those coffee talks and hopefully get more people involved so we can have more dialogue between the council and the citizens and have discussion on these important issues.
Thank you. The next question, what are the most pressing environmental issues Mill Creek faces, and what would you propose to address them? Ms. Duque, we'll start with you.
Yes, absolutely. Continued preservation of our wetlands and our open spaces, having accessibility to those areas, continuing to make sure they're well-maintained, thinking through how we can make connections with our residents to the outdoors. And I mean, you know, including better walkability into, you know, there's beautiful trails, but the trails are, a lot of the trails are just for certain HOAs within the MCCA. And there's those of us who live on the outside areas that don't have access to those specific trails. But we're working in Mill Creek, and you know, there's, Mr. Holtzclaw talked about the DRCC. One of the opportunities I would like there of whatever gets built is that we include more walkable trails, availability for bike riding for young kids, you know, more access to nature, and keeping our, you know, tree canopy is essential, including the land on the other side of 35th, the mitigation area.
Thank you. And Mr. Cook, what is the most pressing environmental issue you see?
I think the number one thing in my eyes would be all the growth. All the building is pushing all the animals and everything out of Mill Creek. And then we see, I see people posting about seeing a bear in their yard or a coyote or a raccoon, whatever it may be. My whole point, though, is we're building and we're taking their land. Where else are they gonna go? I mean, that's, it's, not, I'm not like pro-animal. It's just more like, it seems a little frustrating. I do agree with Ms. Duque, definitely keep the parks, keep them maintained. It's one of the last few things we have around here. The trails are great. The DRCC, it would be a great idea to have some sort of, I guess, multiple things, like a baseball field, walking field, performing arts center, something where people can engage in, in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Holtzclaw, environmental issues?
I think we took care of probably what I would consider the biggest issue, and that was fixing the floating bridge on 35th, the fourth floating bridge in the state that was built on a peat bog by the county before we annexed it. You know, when that wetland backed up, that creates a great issue for the residents and inconvenience and diverts traffic through the neighborhoods and create all sorts of issues. So I was proud that the council and the city was able to get the state to fund the vast majority of the cost of rebuilding that road. You know, as Melissa indicated, we're unique because a lot of the open spaces aren't public parks. We have a great park system, but a lot of the trail systems are generally open to the public, but they're not owned or maintained by the city. So I think just going forward generally, as we have very stringent storm drainage regulations, critical areas regulations, and the best thing we can do is make sure we stay on top of those, enforce them, and make sure that our regulations are consistent with best available science.
Thank you. And our next question will go to Mr. Cook. What should be Mill Creek's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequalities?
To head that off, I mean, it all boils down to education. You know, we can only educate people to explain to them why, why this isn't a good thing. A lot of things have been learned since they were a kid, so it's tough to unlearn that. So the biggest thing is gonna be educating people on their personal biases. And when people say they're not biased or they don't have, you know, they're not racist or whatever it may be, we all have our personal biases. There's no way that no one is perfect. So we all could learn from one another. We need to promote that, especially with our young children, because obviously, they're gonna go up and grow into adults, and they'll have those preconceived notions. So yeah, education would be my first and foremost of the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to Mr. Holtzclaw, what should be Mill Creek's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequalities?
Well, I think one of the biggest areas we see that is in housing. So without going back to what I said a couple minutes ago, I think finding a way to increase some supply for more housing choices can open up our community to different economic segments that may bring in different ethnicities and races. You know, this is, let's be frank, we don't have a particularly diverse citizenry in the city. That's not, but I think it's important to make sure that we don't have racial issues is just communication. I mean, the more we talk and communicate with each other, the better we understand each other. We understand each other's perspectives and backgrounds and points of view. And I think where we run into issues or run into problems with these issues is we all get segmented into our own little silos and we don't communicate. And I think it starts with communication between the council and the citizens to make sure we understand what the issues are. So if there's something that needs to be addressed, we are ahead of it rather than behind the issue.
Thank you. Ms. Duque, what should be Mill Creek's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequalities?
I think first and foremost, it should be something that the city council brings up, saying that it's a priority. But this is something that we're going to work to create an environment that encourages conversations and bring communities of color to the table during decision-making. I happen to live in a neighborhood where, you know, a good amount of renters, a lot of homeowners here in my neighborhood, and quite diverse, not something you would see maybe in other areas within Mill Creek. But I think a lot who are immigrants are just trying to hustle, and so they're not able to become involved in the things, the way that maybe other members of our communities because of where they are in their life, that they're able to attend meetings. So I think continued accessibility to city services, like our, you know, having meetings online, accessibility for website, you know, those types of events. I think that's very important in helping reduce those inequalities.
Thank you. Now, this final question, you will each have 90 seconds to answer, and we're gonna start with Mr. Holtzclaw. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the voting community?
You know, I think the main issue is I hope people get engaged with the city in the coming year or two because we have a lot of important decisions to make as a community. We're gonna have an important decision to make next year on how we provide fire services. It's gonna be a big issue. The costs are gonna go up, and it's gonna be some important decisions that the council doesn't necessarily have to make. It's gonna be the community. Do we annex to one fire district or another? And I think the DRCC is a really big opportunity for us to address a lot of issues. I think we have an opportunity to think big and dream big and consider developing something that could be a community asset, could be a community gathering place that is able to meet the needs of many different segments of our community, from the youth to the senior community, and also be a driver for economic development for our community, whether it be a Boys and Girls Club or a Performing Arts Center. So I think those are important discussions for us going forward because it also, what we do with that property could go to what Ms. Duque was just talking about, you know, creating a sense of community. We don't necessarily have that place where we can bring everyone together and have those communications and celebrate as a community. So I think we have a big opportunity in front of us, and I would be excited to be part of that for the next four years.
And Ms. Duque, what do you want people to know?
Absolutely. You know, I think it's a little bit about what I was kind of saying before. I think it's, and going through this process of running for a political office that I've never done before. But I think, I understand that most residents don't have the time to get involved. And so I believe it is the city and the council's responsibility to meet residents where they are, and, you know, whether that is coffee chats or walking or sending out surveys through postcards or, you know, communicating that way. I think it's really important that we're proactive in how we communicate and listen to residents. I believe that with, that with a careful management of our resources, we can achieve better economic opportunities, preserve our green spaces. I briefly mentioned it, but on the other side of 35th near the farm, there is the mitigation area. I'm really hopeful that we're... that we're proactive as a city to take ownership of that space when it is our time to do so and are active in making it because there's, it's a beautiful area. They've done it really well. It's not open yet, but to be able to have that, it's a little like crown jewel on this side of Mill Creek that we have access to for for running and for, and walking with the kids. So I think looking for those opportunities to make sure that we, our families, you know, feel safe and engaged in Mill Creek, it's it's really important that we provide that and that we're extra vocal about it so that people can't say they don't know about things unless they're really turning a blind eye.
Thank you. And Mr. Cook, what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
Well, first and foremost, that I'm here for them. I'll listen to what their needs are. I do hope that the people of Mill Creek do become a little bit more engaged, and that goes for myself as well. I'm definitely guilty. I need to be more engaged with Mill Creek. And especially, I'm excited to see the future of Mill Creek. I do believe, obviously, we have multiple issues to tackle. And I'll be definitely willing to give it my all to make, to fix those issues if possible. I do, I do I do, like, what am I trying to say? The DRCC, it's definitely a big issue. It could go, it could be a great asset, but it also could go the opposite way depending on what goes there, I think. I think a lot of people, a lot of citizens have different ideas what should go there. You know, and next would be, again, bringing back, bringing back businesses, bringing additional businesses into City of Mill Creek for that tax revenue to help our infrastructure, our roads. 527, adding, it's already kind of not the greatest road. 35th is not very great. Yes, we did fix that, the bridge, the peat bog. That's a great thing, but those roads can't handle that much traffic. So I guess my whole point, though, is just bringing in revenue, addressing the issues of the infrastructure and going forward with the DRCC. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is the, this is the end of our forum, and the League wants to thank these candidates for joining us and for running for office. A recording of this forum and others will be available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and our YouTube channel. You can find the link at LWV SnoHo, S-N-O-H-O dot O-R-G. We encourage you to explore additional information about these and all candidates. The Snohomish County voter pamphlet will be mailed to residences starting October 13th. Vote411.org, sponsored by the League of Women Voters, is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. Finally, general election ballots will be mailed on October 14, and Election Day is November 2nd. Please vote. Again, thank you all for joining us. This concludes our candidate forum.